And Ms. Comey, you are all good to go.
Very good. It is 6:30 and tonight's meeting of the Sichet Select Board, it's Tuesday, May 10th. And before we start the meeting, I would like to read the statement that we're all boards are being asked to read. The Sichet Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation in our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards, support and respect our community. I will call on you to order the White House acceptance of the agenda. So, moved by Ms. Canfield, all in favor? Aye. 5-0. Before we do walk-ins and the report of the downtown administrator, I would like to extend to the Reed family our deepest condolences on the passing of veteran firefighter John D. Reed III. He died on May 4th and we extend our condolences especially to his family, his wife Sandra, and his children, Jack, TJ, Justin, Derek, and Sean. They were married for 31 years, so we know that he will be deposed. And I know that the entire community will miss him. He served as a firefighter for 28 years in the community. And I hope that, you know, everyone, if you get a chance to be around one of their going to be ceremonial march with firefighters, one will be at the church, the other I believe will be at the church. Yeah, St. Anthony's. So, if you can show up to just observe that very moving tribute that firefighters gave each other, I know the family appreciate it. Does anyone on the board wish to say anything? So, on that sad note, I will say also, we are missing someone tonight for the first time in a long time, and that would be Ruth Thompson. She was our longtime reporter for the Sichet Mariner. I don't know if any of you are aware of it, but the Mariners have reorganized and Ruth has taken on a different assignment. I will say that I think the community is, it's a loss for us because she not only covered government, but she covered a lot of personal stories and goings-on around town. And it's going to be, I personally think, a big problem to not have a regular reporter in the community. It's unfortunate, but it seems to be the way in the world. But we would like to thank Ruth for her many years of service and thank her especially for her fairness. You know, she never took sides on anything. She always presented both sides, even of some of the most controversial issues. So Ruth, if you're listening, may be fine. Thank you very much on behalf of the board and the citizens of Sichet. So, walk-ins. Do we have any walk-ins tonight? No. Jim, the report of the town administrator.
Good evening. Nice to everybody. Happy May. Everybody had a nice Mother's Day. We'll start with the COVID cases. COVID data, the numbers are going back up. May data last week was 32, which is up from 24 the previous week. The total number of cases reported with border health was 53. Positivity rating over the last 14 days was 5.67, which is up from 5.15 the previous week. Little counties had 5.18, up from 4.43. The statewide positivity rate for the last seven days was 6.63%, which is up from the previous week of 5.37. Statewide, there were 47 individuals in ICU, up from 37, and 22 patients were intubated, up from 15. So the numbers continue to rise pretty much across the board. Right now, the CDC says Suffolk, Middlesex, Norfolk, Hampshire, Worcester, and Boston counties have high levels of COVID. Little county has not reached that level yet. And the CDC recommends if you are in a county with a high level of COVID, that you should wear masks in doors and on public transportation. So we keep saying that we're not done with COVID yet. If you haven't been vaccinated, please do so. If you've been vaccinated, you get boosted. If you've been boosted, your relatives will get you second booster. This is your best defense against coming seriously or worse from COVID. Reservoir, water update, we made it 2.75 plus inches. Tech factory was at plus 2.5, which is up a quarter inch from the previous week. The average daily demand remained at about 1.2 million gallons per day. Again, most of that is coming from our wells at this point, but not by the treatment plant that much. Magenese measured that the treatment plant was at 0.139, and that is high enough to cause discolored water going through the plant. As the boards are aware, we did not treat fine in Magenese at the plant, so it goes right through and up the other end. Rainfall over the last seven days was 0.45 inches. The water contractor is in town, he's doing some small jobs, but really kind of a quas this week, and we'll be back at it next week getting our water main projects completed. If you drove from the road, you see the mask DOT kept their word. They paved the road every Sunday night. It looks pretty good. We're waiting for when they have to come back and do the striping. Once we hear that, we'll of course let people know, but the road looks pretty good. Slow down. I know most people with the road would be paying so you can go around a little bit quicker than normal, but please.
Sorry? Your car hasn't took anymore.
It's inevitable when we pave around, the next complaint we get is people are going too fast on it. So we're hoping we got a paving plan shortly, and we're waiting for a mask DOT to finish doing their safety review. As I talked about before, we'll remember that they're going to do a safety review from heavy ton of baleen all the way out through the road. We'll see what comes back on that to do some improvements along 3A and hopefully get some work done on that. The Finest Kind has finished building it down. They're gone. If you went and watched it, it was as boring as I told you. But they get it out. They did a good job. They're thinking of after themselves. Houses of History is still in town. They'll be in town on our off working on First Parish for Tilden, renovating old houses. And again, Mary's Bondi will be filming a commercial at the Lighthouse on May 18th through 6 p.m. to sunset. Shipshape Day was a success. Well, the 400 volunteers were cleaning up the town. I know Kevin's guys are working on the final tonnage number of last year, which was nine tons of trash. I think we probably hit that this year driving around town. Some of the stuff that people end up. So thank you. The town looks great. Please help us keep it that way. Our barrels are out. We have 160 barrels out. We have two workers working seven days a week picking up barrels. We need people's help. If the barrels fall, please put your trash in another barrel. Don't just leave it next to the barrel that's there. And we'll get it cleaned up. But it's out. We're working, and those guys are back on their seven-day schedule. The DPW, the contractor, will be on Oceanside Drive side of this week repairing the outfall. The board had approved that contract. That's right, at the city of Kenneth. That will help, you know, alleviate some of the flooding in that area, but it's something we got to get fixed, damage in a recent storm. I know one of the things people are asking about is paving. We are working on the paving schedule. Unfortunately, with the fluctuations in fuel prices, we see the same fluctuations. Our asphalt cost of that, this keeps changing. The two roads we get the most calls about are Old Open Bucket and Brook Street. Those are both torn up pretty good. That's kind of the water projects. Those will be done this year. They are on the list. Right now, we are in the queue waiting for the contractor to say, okay, Sichet, you're up. We'll be there coming up. But a lot of people are calling on those two. Brook Street in particular is in pretty rough shape and really needs to be done. But as normal, we let that sit for a year after we do a water project so that the trench settles. But it will be done this paving season. Again, the contractor, we're just waiting for a game of the contractor to close, so we'll be able to get that done. So you will see paving. Everybody's trying to get paving done. So might take a little bit, but Kevin expects to have a paving list by the end of the week. They'll send it out to the board. You can have it. I know a lot of people will. That's what I have for this week.
Well, I will say that it looks like the Department of Transportation state was hardly clear that there was no traffic trouble that I could really see. If you live down there, maybe there might have been noise at night, but it was remarkably a project. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, they get it out. And again, we didn't see many complaints on our office on the work, so I sit down. Again, the road looks pretty good. So once they get the striping done, we'll be done with that. We'll go on to other things.
And thanks to Kennedy's, the inside of the board read was really nice. Anyone else? Any questions to the town administrator? Yes, Ms. Canfield?
Not so much your question, but just a topic that... I thought we'd make those cases. We are at that time of year, we are going to consider internships, which we had last summer, I think to great success. The board has not discussed that. I don't know if Jim even got it on your radar yet, whether or not we could benefit from it, but maybe that's a topic for another meeting. But it is, everyone's getting out of school now, so we're going to recruit. It's time.
I was having on my radar screen, now that you mentioned it, I have one project that I'd love to just slide over and mention. I don't want them to handle it, but I really haven't completely locked this one, to be honest with you.
Did you think you needed an intern for the, to finish up the?
Yeah, I was going to get to that. Ladies and gentlemen, of course, but yeah, I did benefit from an intern for the Chicago Review Committee, and definitely was something that's either a paralegal-type student or in terms of that kind of work, just to finalize it before socialization. So.
Did I actually, Mike, Mike Rochelle had a good experience for an intern? Something like you weren't part of it earlier, Karen?
No, that was worse.
Well, I guess maybe just any sort of a...
I know the building may have been, I believe, a lot of resources. I'm trying to turn doing some work, and I think it could be actually work that it is. So again, as long as we have something, something to do, I have at least one project that would be more than happy to take off my plate.
Young man that worked in the water resources last year, did a special job, is actually an intern with seven-year time. We have the graphic with a little dog in. All right. My thank you to the town administrator. Anyone in the audience have a question? I'm sorry.
Any update on the budget software?
Ruth was talking about that yesterday, actually.
We signed a contract with ClearGov. We already uploaded our chart accounts. We had our first initial crosswalk meeting, and I have another meeting with them on Monday to do the second go-around of the crosswalk.
Listen, should be up in line.
The plan is June 1st.
June 1st.
What's it called? Would you mind if this is, if somebody explained it other than the name of the event?
Sure, yes.
About crosswalks?
Open Gov.
It's ClearGov. It's financial transparency. So you could go on and take a look into anyone's budget, see what history, nice pie charts on the website. If you go on ClearGov now, you could look up the town of Sichet, but it's only information they pulled out of the proper voting, that you can have in the community.
Oh, that sounds good.
So breaks down the budget. So much goes here, so much goes there. We'll be taxed on so much of that. So.
Great.
And you can compare it with other towns, their resiliency budgets for other towns. Gives more power to folks in home to actually have a real sense of what's happening, all the great work that you're doing, but another way to kind of analyze and see what's happening. Kind of opens up a window, easier format.
Right. More information is obviously better. That's it? Anyone else? All right. Let us move on. Discuss vote. Outdoor Entertainment Department for the Harvard United Methodist Church for several summer Fish Friday events. Yes, please. At 55 First Parish Road. The dates are June 3rd, July 1st, September 2nd, October 7th, from 6 to 8 p.m. Robert Danway, anywhere the minister.
Robert Danway. I'm representing the church. I'm a member of the church. What does it look like the fish fry?
We love the fish fry. Everybody loves the fish fry.
It's been very successful the last couple of years we've had it. They were asking to have permission to do it again. We're going to do it. Whether we can add the music outside is the issue. Like permission to have bands play, have the grandchildren scheduled for May 3rd, and whoever shows up, it's the name of the group, on July, the first Friday of July.
So it looks like it's set for the live music on June 3rd, July 1st, September 2nd, and October 7th.
Right.
And the hours are from 6 to 8 p.m.
Correct.
And have you done it, if you asked?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yes. We haven't heard any controversies related to it.
No.
That's good. I invite everybody to come. It's a nice evening. It's a family-friendly and affordable dinner. You can say a good petition to the community to offer.
Absolutely. Any questions from the board? Obviously, they come in online to with the first, First Friday events as well, so it's a nice.
Yeah, and that's Friday.
Yeah, so good, good little, and that's First Friday in the heart, or not First Friday in the heart of St. Eric's? Correct. Okay. First Friday is, I think, brought up Catholic Catholic, so you're complaining that are quick. So, any questions?
Nope.
Motion? Move to grant it out to our entertainment department to the Harvard United Methodist Church for musicians playing live, dated on June 3rd, July 1st, September 2nd, October 7th, from 6 to 8 p.m. Moved by Ms. Canfield, second?
Second.
By Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, discuss both special event applications. I see Brenda Connors here. We have first up the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail launch at the Cole Parkway Bandstand on May 22nd from 12 to 3. And would you like to tell us what you're doing? And it's very exciting. You're launching now.
It is very exciting. We happen to be, even with a pandemic, on schedule. We've launched this town, and we can't do anything. And it's very exciting. We have additional nine towns involved in this. And at exactly nine minutes before 1:00, bells will peel from Weymouth to Fumis, from the Old South, I think, 20-year church in Weymouth, to the old meeting house in Fumis. Our own Lost and Tower is involved, and they will play Irish music for nine minutes. And the nine minutes is honored with nine towns involved. And as soon as that starts at 1 o'clock, we begin on the clock. And we have a recently shot scheduled, and then official written cutting. We have supposed people from nine towns invited, states and other state representatives. We will have a bank night beforehand, and we expect that, like you tell your ceremony, including for the beginning, we can take about a month. And then at 3 o'clock, we are having a ticketed event at Parket Tavern. And we plan to ask you all to be our guests, but we found out that it's illegal. So we're not asking you to be our guests. We're telling you, if you come back, you can say, like, on our website, ssirishtrail.com. It's from 3 to 7. The Parket Tavern includes a dance. There will be music and there's a side of action. And I feel very much by guys in competition with African-American elephants who take 22 months for gestation. And we are about to give birth. And as any parent knows, this is beneath easy path. And as difficult as it is to understand, I know I have African elephants actually getting the everything to work properly. But there's 33 stops in the nine towns, and fabulous stories from pockets to very rich people to very hard working. It's a wonderful, lovely, but how they resist and change.
So Brenda, when you say launch, what exactly does that mean?
It's just the official.
So, meaning, will people be able to go to any of the sites already, or is there a map that they can follow along or?
Well, Friday is our deadline to go to the printer. So we have him around the hairy week.
I guess so.
And, but yes, there will be maps. Every places are already existing. We are not creating any new spots. We're just taking the existing spots. And Sichet, Lost and Tower is one of our sites, because it was built by Charles Lowe from County Derry in Ireland, and who also built Benetton Park, Gassen Mall at Boston College, and the College of the Holy Cross, and many other churches. Except he was one of the most successful Irish businessmen who stayed. And we have, of course, the Easter Rising Memorial, the Marriett County Lost and Museum, and we have Dreamwell, Thomas Lawson's ancestors way back were Irish. So, we have four spots in Sichet, and 33 spots in our.
There is a website, right?
SS.
So even if the printed thing is not easy to get, people can go online?
They can download the printed dress shoes.
Very good.
They can download the passport and check off sites they've seen. It's ssirishtrail.org. We have no idea how many are coming. For the launch, we are expecting maybe 200, max.
At the bandstand?
At the bandstand.
And do you still have tickets available for the Parket Tavern event?
Parket Tavern event, tickets are online at ssirishtrail.org, and we give out a little deal of 75 dollars each. And it should, and there will be no speeches.
Wonderful.
And it's just.
We like that.
It's just a celebration to get together and enjoy, once more, and just say, we didn't win.
Questions from the board?
Sure. I, I know when I speak for my colleagues that, Brenda, your leadership on this has been nothing short of amusing, and your commitment is going to be felt for generations to make this happen. So benefits to the community, to the Irish heritage, to economic development, all of the above are going to ripple for a long time. So thank you so much for your work.
Well, there was a lot of work to it, but I have to say, I was not the one doing it. It was, I was just making sure it was being done. And others were, the committee is actually at, I said the other day, I need somebody to do such other than, other than everyone committed passionately, and had to work where they have. And they made me look good.
Sign of a good leader. You took the words right out of their mouth. That's it. That's what a good leader is. Tell me.
I think you wrapped it up pretty well. You know, again, thank you for your passion and your, really, the proudness of your heritage and so many other people. Like you said, I hope that people really kind of face it many times and just pass it on. Everybody is very proud of it, and even what people use it. It's going to be an attraction. You know, when people come up to this area, they will, they will see that on different websites, and they'll, they'll see, they'll bring it to the town.
And Advertising Blitz is beginning the weekend of the launch and going through Monday and day. And that will be, will be advertised to northeastern United States, eastern Canada, and Ireland. And we, we expect to have, we are working on a relationship with the Olingus that they will bring people here for our trail, and we will send people to them to provide them the trail. So there's, there's many avenues. Right now, there's just under 3,500 businesses that will benefit in the nine towns from. So I can just look at it.
I think it's fabulous. Congratulations. You work so hard. And I'm sure Conville will cover you shortly, so.
Great advertising work.
Yeah, so hopefully they'll do an exposé on it as well, do a little bit of a tour. See it would be great. So you guys have got this job. Congratulations.
The literature is gorgeous. Of course, you're fortunate. You have graphic artists, you have writers, you have people in every field.
Congratulations, Brenda.
Thank you.
I mean, again, the length of time, work ethic, tenacity, or stick-to-itiveness, is another word. It is.
It is now.
It is now. It's to be, and you work, and, yeah, for generations.
And it's just the beginning. It will be, and we already have five towns trying to join it, which is said, just get your stuff, this is what you have to get ready, and come back in a couple years when you're done.
The only one thing that stood out to me is that you said you expect 200 people. Do the police know that that many are expected? Because I don't think we had that many during the Irish.
I have, I'm not a person that can estimate.
Right.
Correct. I think we will like the Easter Rising. I don't.
See, I knew that wasn't 200.
I don't, somebody said to me, they heard it was 400. And I didn't think it was 400, but I thought it really.
75.
Well, I think it will be more than 75.
Okay.
I'm just.
I was just thinking about space. If you really think that many people are probably just to be sure that, you know, she knows, just because it may require a little bit more assistance.
Do the police come on? We have the entertainment at the bandstands in summer.
I don't know answer that.
To the what?
Do the police have anything to do with when there's entertainment, bands down at the bandstand in the summer?
We usually don't need a detail for that.
No, they don't need a detail. They're aware of it. They, you know, they're in the area, but that runs.
The reason I'm asking is because that sometimes draws quite a crowd, you know? People can line up on the sidewalks and so.
There's usually an officer assigned to that area, so busy, they'll kind of have a little, generally require a detail for those type of questions.
Okay.
We're still waiting police comments for this event, but I think there will need to be a little bit more detour than we have for the Easter Rising. Maybe a little more software so we can kind of divert from that area. Yeah, yeah. But we'll, Officer Billings will, will work with him on that.
Great.
My initial estimate was maybe nine towns, 10 people come from each challenge, nine people. That would be partially different from the people that we have.
So we're, we're the only town launching this online?
On, specifically, treatment is being launched here. This is the headquarters.
Oh, this is the head HQ. Okay. All right. So you're right. It could be. Who knows? Yes, please. Motion?
Move to approve a special event permit for the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail ceremonial launch to be held at the Cole Parkway Bandstand on Sunday, April 2nd, from 12 p.m. to 3 p.m.
It's really one to two, but it's just preparation and preparation.
Yeah. Second, Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So for the community, if you're, for the community, if you're interested in coming to the event, the event is starting at 1:00.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, next we have number two, special event application, Women's March, lands on our bodies, town hall, May 14th, three quarters, paper, and fresh lemon. I said butcher my name. Both ladies are here. Would you love to tell us what you're doing?
Thank you for having us. And I'm here tonight for my daughter because last Tuesday, she felt powerless when the news leaked that Supreme Court and Roe v. versus Wade was in jeopardy. Steph and I decided to do something that day and show our daughters that we stand for women everywhere. We would like to hold this event on Saturday, May 14th, at 3 p.m. at the town hall to encourage people to use their voices to vote and stand up for their rights. It will be one hour, we have a PA system, speakers, a call and response, music. I don't think we're going to march because we already have about 150 people signed up already. We've talked to, we've all been to training, or will be on trainings online this week for just working out any issues that may come up. And we've also been in touch with Officer Billings regarding catch and flow parking, and St. Luke's has agreed to offer flow parking. Any questions?
I don't know why I'm nervous talking about you guys. We did, there was a similar type of event.
Yes, two years ago.
Yes, Martha referred it. It was very well done. So it's, in my mind, I'm thinking it's going to be somewhat similar.
I think we have a lot more attending just because that was COVID. It was, like we had people standing six feet apart, you know, with their backs on next to a flag. We were pretty restricted with the amount of people we were even letting in. We were crossing them off so we could COVID check. I don't think we're going to be doing that, but.
But it's the same mother organization that's running it, that's how I think, because we will help Martha. And so when they sent out the, the call to action on Thursday, we got it because we've been previously registered, so we were familiar with that. And we were there setting up with her and seeing it. And it was the same, you know, so same type of feeling, you know, very family-friendly. They want their heads to be, and like I said, we're, we all are going to training, stuff where they just talk up, you know? Yes, like she did, like she did, you know, like, you know, all that.
Yeah. Well, that event was very well run. I can't imagine this won't phase you off. So, questions from the board? Start with Andrew.
So, the woman floor, right here, it's, yeah, all the training, please make sure we do this very well, travel close.
No, just thank you for stepping up and organizing it.
No, just thank you for stepping up and organizing it.
Yeah, I have one question. Is it mostly going to be in the lawn right in front?
Yeah. Yeah, so the exact setup we had before, we had speakers, we had a little bit, and we have, you know, there, there will be like the, some people we've dropped off ballots. So if they're driving by, we had people just stop, you know, what they were doing before. You saw it as well, spoke, Karen. So just very similar.
Yeah, I would just be careful, you know, stay just, stay away from free, Ken.
Oh, yeah, down more towards the Town Hall building.
Ms. Candy?
Yes, thank you. Very much appreciate you organizing so quickly. And I know that I can know reservation better as well and I will be here myself. It's extremely timely that this conversation is with our town elections, so.
No, and I know the call to action was to do these in front of Town Hall, City Hall at a couple places. So I understand that's probably why you chose Town Hall.
And there's adequate parking.
I too. As I was saying, Martha did a great job in 2020. We're familiar with it. She's a very organized woman. Appreciate Martha. Um, do I hear motion?
Sure. Move to approve a special event permit for a Women's March Lands Off Our Bodies to be held on the front lawn of Town Hall on May 14th, from 3:00 to 14:00.
Second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Benyani. All in favor? Aye, five, zero. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. You too. Successful event.
Thank you. I think I just skipped the public hearing about the politician. Because it's not 7:15 yet. Do I see anyone who wants to discuss about the new Cape Verde Sister City charge?
Yes.
Oh, either they're.
One of them.
Sorry. Ruth is hiding.
I know, I was thinking that when I was watching the school. And it says on time is early. I had a class where if you weren't five hours early, you were late. No excuses. So another Sister City. It sounds very exciting. Would you like to pause it?
I talked to Steph earlier.
Mr. Seacor, you are good to go. Turn your volume down on your computer if you can. And you are, you are a co-host. Just turn your.
And Steph, the disembodied. He is the man behind.
He likes the window rod. That curtain.
Well, perhaps you could both introduce yourselves so that the viewing public knows who you are.
Yes.
We know who you are, but.
Mr. Benyani first. Okay, yeah, Tom Seacor, Chair of the Citu University.
Angela Biegere, right, Co-Chair of the Citu University.
And this Sister City relationship is being, is coming out of discussions that were around in your big city.
Yeah, it probably should have been one of the first recommendations. Because I think that this has, you know, a lot of support. Seems like a bit of a no-brainer, given the Cape Verde community here in Citu. So, yeah, so our recommendation is to create a third Sister City. Karen, and so we wanted to give some of the background on that and then review the charge and hopefully go from there. So Angela is going to review some of the, some of the background of the purchase.
Yes. As I think all of you know, Cape Verde and citizens, so citizens of Cape Verde heritage have been in Citu for quite some time. I believe it goes back to the early 1900s. Some believe it goes back even further. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of documented history of the town. Other towns, other cities have more. So I think it would be nice to have more research done and more documentation of that in Citu. We believe that immigration goes back from the 1900s. The majority of the Cape Verdean citizens in town come from two islands. Cape Verde is made up of 10 islands. The two islands are Fugu and that's where the majority of the Cape Verdeans come from. And it's very interesting because most of the Cape Verdeans that came to Citu came in groups, families. So they came from the same village. They moved to Citu because they had families in Citu. So unlike a lot of immigrants that are, you know, immigrated to the city where they know no one, we were very fortunate because we tend to have, have families here. My grandfather actually came, he and his brothers, in barely 1916, 1918. So my father was going to Cape Verde while my grandfather was here. You know, either here or down in Cape Verde. So there's generations of families that have lived in Citu. One of the, one of the families in Citu that does have some history recorded is the Mendez family. Mr. Mendez, Enrique Mendez, actually owned the Escunera Estina. So this is a local town story.
That's very big.
Yes, very big. And I'm just going to read this. Enterprising and adventurous Enrique Mendez from 1880 to 1970, owned 17 sailing vessels over his lifetime. His ships brought thousands of Portuguese islanders to the United States, including over half the Cape Verde and Citu families. Now, I want to credit the source of that information is the Citu Visitor Center. Which in doing my research, I was very happy to see that. Because not only are the Cape Verdean, we Cape Verdean citizens interested in our connection with the town, but majority of the town, I would say, is interested as well. There are other connections with Citu history that I've learned just from speaking to others. One is the connection with Thomas Lawson himself. It's been said that he hired and helped support a lot of Cape Verde immigrants in his property and his fortunes as well. Another local businessman that I know personally, because my father worked for him, was Alan Wheeler. He was very supportive and helpful in hiring, you know, the Cape Verdean community in Citu. So we've been members of the community for a long time. Early settlers worked in farming, shipbuilding, whaling, fishing industry, cranberry growers, laborers, vacuum workers, so much of other immigrants. When they come, they work, you know, where they can find work. Past and present community members have worked for the town. There's been firefighters, firefighters, police officers, teachers, educators, you know, mail carriers, doctors, just here, you know, professionals in all fields. And again, we are active members in the community, volunteering, student leaders, and obviously senior members of the community. Which I love speaking to senior members of the community. I'm learning so much. And you must remember also, Cape Verdean veterans served in both World Wars in Korea, Vietnam, and all wars of conflict. I recently was speaking to an older gentleman who told me he was a veteran of the Cape Verde War. And I told, I took out my phone, got his phone number, and then I would be in touch with him to get more information. Because his face lit up when I was asking him questions. When did your family first come? He was telling me how his family actually worked in the proving grounds. I'm like, oh, you bring up the proving grounds. But yeah, we have been members of the community. We love this community. I am happy when I tell people about possibly this third Sister City. The response is, why hasn't there been one? And I want to say, because no one's asked. I say it's no fault of the town. I've met with the women that started the Sister City in France, the Sister City in Ireland, and they have those because they wanted it. And they approached the board and the town agreed to it. So again, it's time. And I know there's a lot of people interested in volunteering and joining committees, so I'm hoping that the board approves this.
Very good. Questions from the board? Is there anything you want to tell us about where, how you, what point you're at, is I think what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Do you want to, I mean, where we at now is recommending that the board approve the third Sister City. The look, the Sister City, we recommend it to be in the island of Fugu. It would be the Sister City in Santa Catarina de Fugu. Santa Catarina is a municipality that's small, similar to Citu, it has a port. It consists of 13 small villages and towns. There's some similarities to Citu and it has that connection with the Cape Verde community.
That's great.
Yes.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that the island?
Volcano, yes. Have you been?
No, I was just reading about it. It's fascinating. It's like 50% bigger than Mount Washington. It's.
It is, yeah. Tourism has grown because of the volcano. And it last erupted in 2015. So it is still in mind.
It's very, I'm sorry, it's very, very interesting.
That's why they said, I have been born in Fugu also, so.
It's beautiful. I'm sorry. Anyway, my greater point is that.
You're doing the first trip. It's a fun.
Really is. The volcano's in Ireland, right? I have to, so.
It's what's on?
The volcano's in Ireland.
Yeah.
My first reaction as well was, I, I wasn't this. So I think it's, I think it's powerful. I fully support this project and to just thank you for this together. Again, I'm just, again, bringing this up, learning more, getting more interested about the history and the culture and everything. It's, it's already changed my outlook and I'd like to learn more and what we can do.
And the recommendations to create the committee. Right, just for the better one.
And you'll be able to recruit people and ask them to join you.
Yeah.
Well, so probably follow the, the normal committee appointment schedule if we approve it.
Sure.
Yeah. But yeah, which is coming up. It's, it's upon us again.
It's a good timing.
Yeah, I think that's why we wanted to get it on the document now.
It's very good time.
Perfect timing.
Yes.
So that you guys can all solicit.
Absolutely.
Community members.
Yes. I just have, I read the, the chart and your goal. Did you pull a lot of that from the French and the Sudan, you know, so like, yeah, okay.
1990.
I agree so much, which is great why not follow a great model.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm so excited for you, you know, and the Cape Verde community, community is just so prevalent here, you know. And it'll just be so wonderful for all of us to learn more about the culture that you come from, to share that and. I'm, thank you so much, Angelo. It was a great idea to bring forth and talk and make sure this happens in our community. See who comes to apply for your committee and so we can appoint, so you can get started. We did, we did take, we looked at both charts for Sister City and the I. We took a look at it both. One of the things that we did take from the French city was that it was open to members in other communities and not just Citu. We thought that was important because there are Cape Verdeans that may, and have grown up in Citu, who may not live in rural marshes or other towns. And we feel it would be nice to do that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think I like the fact that we're bringing it out there. It really just takes a leader, you know, really takes someone with the interest to do it. And we've seen the benefits that we've gotten out of that other two areas, which is, so I'm sure it's a success for two cities. Best of all.
Yes, Ken, I just didn't dovetail Tony's views. The opportunity for not only acknowledging heritage here in our community, but for combining, we've got momentum with three Sister Cities. That will open up doors for economic development and attracting people to our community that might not otherwise, you know, be on their radar. So I'm really excited to see all that play out. Making, doing the work and recruiting folks. So the timeline, lectures are next Saturday, and then we reorganize and basically fling open the doors for applications for two and one appointments, I believe. It's the dead knock. It's the, so it'll happen quickly. So get, get folks to put their apps in as soon as possible. Do you like a motion?
Well, I'd just like to say that I was lucky enough to meet Mrs. Montero two years ago. Brought her the Boston Post check in to celebrate her 100th birthday. She's since passed away, but she was in the nursing home down there and she, she pointed out to me that she was born across the street. And I know one of her sons became an educator at Citu High.
Yeah, a teacher at the high school.
Yes, yes. So it was wonderful to meet her. So if, if you can think that she was born here 100 years ago, that suggests that, yeah, there's a long history here. So, yes, I would love to.
And I, I was, you just made me think that if we are thinking about internships, perhaps students might want to do Cape Verde, Cape Verde history as a project this summer. Just about. Move to approve the special event. Oh, goodness, I don't know what I'm sorry. Somebody had it up. Yep, move to establish a new Cape Verde Sister City and approve the charge as presented this evening.
Second? Second by, I heard this Cantfield, so second by Mr. Cantfield, all in favor? Aye, five, zero. Congratulations. We can't wait to work with you and looking forward to this new committee. We just, we just had 10 people, I think 10 or 12 people from France here. So it'd be great in a couple of years to have a similar number from Cape Verde.
And you're looking for a minimum of 10 committee members, correct?
That's what we put in the charge.
And that's up down there, so folks know there's plenty of spaces.
That's right. Thank you.
Excellent. So much.
Yeah.
Great evening.
So next, we have a public hearing to discuss both the politician. I'll actually have to call. Okay. Holly Crest Road and Michelle is calling Jose Vasquez from National Grid.
Good evening, Jose.
Good evening, Jose. You were here at the Slack board meeting. How are you?
I'm doing well. Good evening, board. Good evening, residents.
Good evening, Jose. I'm Karen Conley, the chair, and with me is Karen Cantfield, a member, Tony Benyani, a member, Laura Current, a member, and Andrew Goodrich, clerk. We'll call the clerk tonight. So would you like to tell us about your politician?
Yes, so we are proposing to install two new joelio poles. The purpose for installing these two new poles would be to provide electrical service for a new house building at 42 Holly Crest Road.
Very good. Can you tell us where Holly Crest Road is? Off of Booth Hill? And if I recall, I think that's the street that goes into the Hastings McAllister, Constellation Inn that we bought a little years ago.
Yep.
It's a small sort of country road. I think it's even a private way. Go ahead. So.
I think, yeah, I can double check here.
It is a private one. Okay. So, Jim, do we have anything to say about poles on private ways?
I think we should have some proof of the poles though.
Okay.
I just want to point out one.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is off of Booth Hill Road. It's just along, like a long road that they're adding next to the park at the bottom there.
Okay. Good. And Jose, there was some comments forwarded to you from DPW. And that there is an existing water main on Holly Crest that's to be extended to the proposed house. And they're requesting that you work with them extending the water main. The Water Department will not sign off on a building permit until the water main is extended, pressure tested, and chlorinated for use. So the National Grid needs to work with the Water Department prior to installing the pole. That has been forwarded.
Okay, let's just make sure we have clearance from them. Is that what they're requesting?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, just so, just so they know, I already pre-marked, like, taken the polls out there. They're, they'll be red and white. So if they wanted to go, you know, take a look and if they had any questions, feel free to give them my number. I have them reach out to me.
So can we approve it prior to DPW doing what they need to do?
Just approve intention about DPW's.
Does anyone have any questions?
Jose, are you putting in pole seven and pole eight?
Correct. The, the current pole that's there existing is, it ends at pole six.
Yep.
So it would be going across the street. It wouldn't be on a. Uh, so it would be going across the street. It wouldn't be in front of, uh, uh, we're going across the street 'cause Holly Crest is on the other, forty-two is on the other side. And then it will be put, it would be adding two new poles with, um, the overhead. It's just gonna be secondary conductors from pole six to pole eight.
Is there a house at, at zero Holly Crest?
No, there is not. I, I believe that owned by the town. That's why it has like a zero, but there's no house there currently.
So you're not, that pole seven isn't going in front of some of these, some of them?
No, correct. I, that's why I put it across the street. It wouldn't be in front of, um, house number thirty-three. I'm making sure if they can build on that lot, but I, I believe it's owned by the town, if I'm not mistaken.
I was just gonna, I was, that's probably, I put a whole parking area for the conservation land.
I wonder if there's a park to the path that goes there. That's, is that at zero? Do you, do you want back there a room?
I don't, I'll never walk down on this particular one, but like to know this abuts part of the conservation land out there. And it abuts the water, that'll come up at some point. And Higgins McAllister is the property that we bought back there, so. And I, I think that there was some talk of putting some sort of parking down there to access, uh, the, the conservation property, but I don't think we've done yet.
Jose, is there any way to put this underground?
Um, yeah, that's it. The way that we got that will be lease cost to serve. So if we were to put it underground, it would cost the customer more money for their trenching and, you know, all those other costs. So, um, we usually don't lease cost to serve to the, for the customer. And so they'll take it overhead and then they'll just go underground from their last pole to their residence.
Any other questions?
No, no question though, Tony. I'd love to see anything to go underground.
So.
No, no one's here for it, so.
Or against it.
I mean, to talk about.
Yeah. Do you want a motion? Please. Everybody else set up the motion? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Move to approve National Grid plan number three zero five two eight six six two to install two J O poles, P seven and P eight, approximately two hundred and ninety feet plus or minus from the existing P six pole contingent upon approval. Um, for the situation, DPW signing off before. Motion that is current, sent by Mr. Woodbridge. On favor? Aye, 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 five zero, motion carries. Thank you, Jose.
Well, thank you so much. And, uh, please, um, have the DPW, um, reach out to me at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. So next we have, we're a little ahead of schedule, if you don't mind, gentlemen, do you?
Not at all.
Students, I'm ready. Discuss vote, waterways permission, regulation changes, the changes to waterways enterprise fund fee schedule. Mike Givens, chair, and I see Steve Mahomes here, Harbinger Master. Welcome, gentlemen. Like to tell us about proposing?
Sure. Good evening. Mike Ford, I'm the chair. Um, we have been brought to, uh, by the Harbinger Master's office, the opportunity to look at the mooring rules and regulations as well as some of the fees and make some amendments to it for the veterans of the, uh, clarification of the rules and regs. So, three, um, three changes to the actual regulations itself. Then one proposed change to the fee structure. So, um, it's okay with you guys. I'll start with the regulations to just kind of summarize that. I think you might have that coffee there, it's a tank. So the, the first change that we're recommending, um, was the cap of the actual mooring size in the rules and regulations to sixty feet. Today, it said up to sixty feet. There's no provisions for a ground tackle and other stuff for, um, moorings that are above sixty feet. So this is really more of a clarification. We didn't have moorings that are greater than sixty feet. We're just trying to make sure the rules are clear so that people can come in and ask for moorings that are greater than sixty feet. Correct.
Yes.
So, explain to me what that means. Does that mean that you can, you can only have a boat that is up to sixty feet or?
Underwater.
Underwater, yeah.
On, okay, so.
Underwater. If you're in a private marina or if you got a room in a town marina, you have bigger boats than that.
All right.
Town pier, uh, a boat that's sixty feet.
Okay, so we're not trying to keep out the big boats necessarily, but.
No, it's just, it's difficult that, you know, mooring areas, um, you want space.
Directly, yeah.
If you picture a sixty foot vessel or something greater than sixty feet, it needs roughly twenty feet of pendant that would go to the, to the, uh, rope to the pendant and then probably twenty feet of chain. So if it was a lower tide and the wind is pushing it, it could be essentially up eighty, ninety feet of swing room, which takes up a lot of room. So we don't have moorings in that size today. We're just trying to clarify the rules so that, uh, people don't come in and ask for moorings in that size.
But if a tall ship wanted to come in?
That, that is a really good point. So if the tall ships wanted to come in like they did in twenty sixteen, somewhere.
It's been every so often with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's one of my first signs.
America.
Right, yeah. So what we did, we had, uh, we had them come to the town pier. We really don't have a mooring that would be adequate to hold a vessel of that size. So we made special arrangements to kind of have them come in there. So this is really just about the actual moorings itself, where they would be swinging around on a stone, they're chained in the harbor itself, or the rivers.
Okay.
Can you remember the list of one hundred and twenty-five feet mooring?
Yeah, yeah. There was no way we could have put that on a mooring, but we could get it on the face dock at the top here.
Yeah. Just don't want you to think we're not gonna be able to have fun if a tall ship says, can we come, we'll try and figure it out.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, the second change is really to regulate commercial marine equipment in Citrus waters. We didn't have any regulations, even mooring regulations today for, um, how that's handled. And the reason this is being addressed is because if you own a commercial operation, maybe a tug and a barge, and you came into Citrus waters and you're doing work somewhere, um, typically with the barges, they actually don't go onto a mooring. They can't, right, if there's a mooring that's suitable for them, right? But it typically go into another area and they spud down and they'll, they'll pick up cleared area and they'll push their piling essentially down due to the mud and area to hold that vessel in place while, while the work is being done or to be, um, or to be stored if, if they're not actively working at that point, right? So the problem is that in some cases, vessels like this are coming into Citrus. They're coming into areas without making prior consent from the Harbinger Master's office. Nothing in the rules, regulations today that says that they can't come in and spud down, let's say, and leave a vessel there. And we're really just giving the rules and regulations to give to the Harbinger Master and the town of Citrus to protect our waterways, right, and make sure that we have some sort of process and a check-in policy and, uh, resolution if someone stays there for long periods of time without doing any work. We're not trying to stop people from being, be able to do the work, we're just trying to make sure that they check in with the Harbinger Masters, get an adequate spot to moor the, uh, the equipment, so that one's being used in front of some house maybe for a hearing or, uh, or what is not being used, if, you know, as, as maybe during the, if they're doing it during the weekend, they have to put it out of the way on a, on a weekend or whatnot. So, the change is really here, really to, A, it says barges, sectional barges, dunce stouts, dredges, crane barges. These are all, you know, commercial service provider equipment. It's not anything to do with fishing vessels, right? Uh, but they shall not more anchor in Citrus waterways without prior approval of the Harbinger Master. So that's what A is saying. B is essentially saying, if I can summarize this here, uh, that they really need to check in with the Harbinger Master's office, um, two weeks ahead of entering Citrus waters so that they can make accommodations for where they're gonna be working, um, and try to select active places for the barges and that equipment to be stored, so. The latter part of that paragraph, B, does include must have liability insurance within the town of Citrus listed as additional insurance. The liability insurance can be, um, water's enterprise fund fee structure sheet, which we can get to, um, when we get to the fee structure at least. Um, item C here is, item equipment shall not be moored in Citrus waters and will be subject to approval at the owner's expense. Item equipment will be assessed daily fine, the amount approved by the water's collection. In the water's enterprise fee structure sheet, all fines collected shall be debadged until the water is found. What we're really trying to do is put some teeth into the rules here so that someone does come and leave equipment, which has been happening. If there's some teeth there to say, hey, you're gonna get tracked to two fifty a day unless you get your equipment approved. Part of these rules that we put in here are to be somewhat consistent with what Marshfield is doing. As we know, we, we share waterways, uh, down the rivers with, uh, Marshfield and they do have, uh, most of these rules are written kind of the same, so there's not exact. But we're trying to make sure that we're both kind of in this together, so that they can't come in and say, well, fine, I'll just move to the Citrus side of the river and, and kind of start with that.
And this would apply to all Citrus waterways, rivers.
Harbor, yeah.
Harbor over in the near capacity area every.
That make sense?
Yep.
I have some questions for you.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, go ahead. You wanna wait till we're done? Do you wanna ask me to go?
Um, yeah, why not just?
Are we done with this one?
Um, no, sorry, one other item here, item D. Temporary moored vessels must display prosper U.S. Coast Guard regulations. We get input from some people that if there's a barb or scowl and it's nighttime and they're not illuminated, maybe someone's not used to having something that's there, they're very tough to see a lot of times, it's dark colored or rust colored or dark green. And we feel that they should be illuminated while they're at nighttime with Coast Guard regulation lights so that they, um, to, to protect really the vessel that's handling.
So, um, Tony, does you have questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right.
So, on the, I mean, this is private, right, so if any state or all that sort of stuff is.
Normally, um, like it's town work. I know a lot of, you know, hire them.
Right. Or when the state comes in and dredges or does some.
Yeah, they, they still, uh, the Coast Guard calls me up and tells me they're gonna be working the area or if the state comes in, they generally call me. They're usually better about it than private contractors.
So my, my questions are really kind of, 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 what are the rules for private people to do work in the water like this? And what are the penalties if they don't do it? I mean, I think those are kind of what I see is missing here in terms of.
So what are we doing?
And then definitions, what is, what was your question? Like, is, uh, in idle, what, what does idle mean that we took the lunch break? Or does that mean it's been sitting here for twenty-four hours or, you know, what is, what is the definition of that? Those are a few things that.
Good question, yeah. Uh, so the first part of that could be, be what you were asking.
Yeah, it's kind of one of the, if you, for commercial, for private people doing work, this type of work, what are the rules? Can you have, be there on the weekend? You have to be there from nine to five. How long can you leave something and where can you leave it and that type of stuff?
Great question, yeah.
And then if you know.
So because, because this is the mooring rules and regulations, this is really just focused on mooring rules and regulations. And then if someone is coming into, um, those areas, how they store the vessel or where it's kept. As far as the regulations for.
Like a deep, like if you were building, if you had a house in the water and you're building a dock, you'd go to, uh, DEP and you'd check the management license. You go to conservation, you come to me. Uh, can we give you approvals, uh, to build that dock or not give you approvals to build that dock? And after that, it's, it's just up to you to get the dock built. But this is more for somebody that's building a dock or the contractor, maybe doing the dock work. And then rather than taking, maybe going back to Boston or Plymouth or wherever they take it to, they just leave it and, and tie it up for, you know, months of time.
Does that happen?
Yeah, yeah.
We just did when, when they go in the big day. Moored vessels just sat there for a week.
Sat there for a while.
Yeah, it was out there for a few weeks. And they were very good about contacting me and, you know, uh, communicating with me as to what's going on. There's other instances, Michelle's gotten calls, um, about, and how we're on.
One, one that's been down there for several years that just keeps moving around that, that people are complaining about.
So the rule of engagement of work is defined by T P.
Yeah, and, and actual job, but.
So that's really not what we're doing. We're, we're dealing with storage, both of them. Okay. And so the one thing that I think we would have to include some, and maybe it is in the, in the next thing, we're gonna talk about what the fees are, if you do it, and the definition of idle.
Yeah, the definition, I, idle, I would, we, we need to kind of clean that up a little bit. Because the intent is really if, if they're done with a project, right, in Citrus waters or down the river, um, we don't want that barges to stay there for two months because they said they have another project coming out. So, um, I guess we need to define how agile this plan is spelled out, um, and what the definition of idle is.
And they have weather issues, you know, they may not be able to get out of, you know, you might say idols a week. And, you know, there's two weeks of really bad weather. It's difficult, like with the big day, not to get there, you're hot.
Yeah.
And that's when they come back down to me and communicate, you know, with weather issues. Not that, um, waiting for another job to come up in Citrus or.
So Mike, is the penalty is going to be addressed in the fee schedule?
Yeah. Um, but we, we were right, we need to put something in there, fling up what idle, the definition of idle is so that, uh, people understand that they just can't leave, like.
If you still, you gotta do whether it's there or not.
And I don't think the intent of, of any of this stuff is all to, to predict people working or really to be giving them a hard time if they're down there, they're, they're a week between jobs or something like that. It's really more about if they're leaving stuff there for long periods of time, in some cases years, right? You don't have any, uh, you know, have any way to kind of prevent them from, um, from keeping it there, so.
Right, that's why I was kind of tailing the marshments. We're kind of both on the same page.
Questions right now?
Yeah, so, I guess the, the two lead kind of notice is that how much of this emergency work or do we have any incidents where, right, if someone had, you need to get this, um, ASAP, is this an emergency that, I don't know, I'm not. Good question. So typically, this, this process is very long. So if someone needs to put, um, a dock or wants to put a dock behind the house, uh, they have to get a permit or challenge.
Yeah, usually six months to a year.
Yeah.
Perfectly, that process, you can, as you know, over the whole concrete project.
Um, so they can't really just kind of come in and say, hey, we're just coming in to do this, uh, I guess unless someone had an active permit, they'll come in to repair some.
Yeah, we had, uh, during that storm with the ninety mile an hour winds back in the fall, um, there were boats that were up on the beach, you know, behind TK Valles, and they still called me. And they said, hey, the project, we're coming into the harbor, is there any way you want, want, or, you know, can I tie it, you know, can I spud down, require TK's all to do the work? And we went out and it worked out fine. They picked a rope, they loaded it on and it locked.
Makes sense, yeah.
Anyone else ready? Want to go on?
Um, section, or the third proposed change to the regulations has to do with, um, houseboats and structures on ten A floats. And before we go into whether ten A float is, because not everyone might understand what that is, we want to just then explain.
All right, a ten A float is, is a mooring and then the float part is a float that's on the mooring. Um, so if you go up in front of the top here, you'll see about three or four, just built like docks floating up there. Plus a ten A float, plus, plus a lobster car. See, I put, there's actually lobsters down below in the water that they hold.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, keep them there. So the price is down to, you know.
Don't you advertise that to you?
Two dollars a pound. Two dollars a pound. Trust me, if you go near those, you're like, I have problems. But it's two dollars a pound and they have a feeling that they got to be like two seventy-five the next day. They may hold them in there for a day or two. Or if the buyer's not coming back into Citrus, they'll hold them in a lobster car for a couple of days. And there's swim platforms, um, that's also what we consider a ten A float. Uh, you can have, uh, with permission, which I'm not a big fan of, is a ten A float or a dock. So you have a mooring, a ten A float mooring, and then you tie your boat up to the float. And it kind of takes up a lot of, a lot of room, uh, probably.
Then we have a bit of that down the road, right?
Right, right.
And the big problem is.
These little boats, right, on the water.
Yes, they're, they're not very well kept.
Or boats or whatever, yeah.
And they end up breaking free and under the marsh, no identification on them. So I don't generally, and these are all whatever, I didn't assign them or assign them after assignment. If you're looking for a ten A float like that, you really have to have a really good reason why you need them. The flip ones, you know, I'm not as problematic with, um, but the ones just so that you can act for your boat is, you know, they have ten A float arenas where you have a half a dozen of these tied together similar to what they have down by Royal Marine from both sides, from the western side and situated side.
Yeah.
And they'll rent space on either side of those. So that's what ten A float is. Now, if you're at the Three Eight Bridge by Royal Marine, you look out to the entrance of the North River, you'll see that there's a red house on a float. That's a ten A float. And that's a lobster car. So it's, uh, one of our lobstermen has, you know, his lobster gear inside there. And I think he actually does score some lobster down on occasion. Um, and, you know, I was thrilled with the idea of it, but, you know, I didn't want to prevent a lobsterman being able to, you know, keep his job and make a living. So I approved it, uh, because it was in regulations that, you know, a lot. Uh, we just don't want it to turn into an area where they turn it down, you know, dwelling units where people are living in. To go down to Woods Hole, um, there's a lot of them, um, but people just don't use the big, you know, um, structure slums. And they're, and they live in it for the summer. I know.
It's like canyon, you know?
I know. So really what we set out here to do is kind of put something in here that says, if you have a ten A float, you can't build a structure on top of it, you can't have that happen as a dwelling, right? Then we, we did get feedback from some other people that said, well, you know, what about houseboats, right? Houseboats, um, which would really be defined as like a boat which can be moored and used as a dwelling. We're not trying to regulate people's boats that they might live on. What we're trying to say is if you have a houseboat or a structure like that, if it's, um, prohibited from mooring or anchoring within town waters except if marines that provide the following. A permanent float or dock or slip towards the houseboat may be directly accessed from land, right? Uh, a sewer connection to a public sewage system or sewage pump out, i.e. tight tank system. An all-weather supply of electricity year round in connection to a public water supply, i.e. an individual gaited backflow valve. And then compliance with all applicable town bylaws and safety requirements. Uh, and then what we also added was structures on any type of ten A floats are prohibited so that people, so you can't either one have a houseboat without meeting these requirements or two, you can't build something that's floating standalone and used as a dwelling. This, this is popped up in different areas around New England and I would say up and down the coast where there's been pretty large communities of houseboats started to kind of come into harbors and areas and there's all kinds of problems with pollution and pump out and other stuff, so.
Do you get a chance at some point to prove Woods Hole has a lot of?
I, I know a few, there was a lot of new marine board up, up in Merrimack River as well, a growing community.
Well, uh, Mike and I talked a little bit about this earlier. I think that houseboats needs to be defined a little bit better here. Uh, you know, I mean, houseboats residing on a ten A float is prohibited from mooring or anchoring. So I don't think it's really clear, but maybe it's clear to the marine community, but it's not really clearly, so.
Yeah, so.
I just think Mike need to add a little bit more definition of.
Yeah, so I looked at Mary Webster tonight before I came and was like, you know.
Helps dictionary. Work on.
Yeah. And it did have a great definition. It had a boat fitted with, with four views as a dwelling, right? And I'm not.
But you even like tying in a ten A float port, that's really annoying for everything. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, it's the ten A float that's turning into a house.
Right. So maybe you say that.
Okay.
Do we have any notes that already exist in town other than the?
The one.
The guy out on the North River?
Uh, that would be, yeah.
That's it, yeah.
So, I guess I'll ask a political question. Is, are these regulations gonna drive a whole bunch of people crazy?
I don't think so. I think it's gonna protect people that have waterfront views and don't want to have these things pop up behind their houses.
You need to correct all of these sting ones?
Well, uh, because it's a lobster car.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't really.
Yeah.
Well, it is a structure on a ten A float and these are already manfounded by.
And I don't want to call it a grandfather because I still, the master always has the ability not to redo it every year. You don't want to, because if it all of a sudden cut in really bad disrepair.
I was just gonna ask, I was about to call the.
Yeah, that's why you don't want to just.
You don't want to.
You know.
Of course, there is one other question.
That would be a very sad day if something happened to that.
I'm not talking about the one, I'm talking about, there's a floating one and then maybe there's another one.
And then there's the house one, the house one, yeah.
There's actually one way down the South River that's way up.
It's not actually.
That's been there probably at least ten years. People don't even know it's probably up there, so.
Cause they've probably never been there.
It broke free in the storm a long time ago, it was to be stored there and washed way up to the marsh.
Can't we just remove it as a navigational pattern or something?
Um, so far on the marsh that I don't read.
Try and get to it.
Oh, I get you.
Yeah, yeah. And.
Let's get wrong now.
That's why when I.
He's like crazy.
Yeah, when I do my job permits.
He's gonna Google what's all houseboat images.
I asked for, you know, street addresses on all boats, all gangways, anything we can float away or float off in the automobile. So that if we find it, I'm gonna get your, you know, your dock.
He's nice in like us. And that's what I'm like, oh.
One foot by, uh.
They don't need building permits, I guess.
Oh, they didn't, there's one down there, uh, Bob Holden built it. It's actually beautiful. He's one of the better builders in town. It's like slide off the second floor.
I was like, fun.
You got a second grill.
So, questions? Well, I guess my only question, it has to be definitions and stuff, but I mean, it's, I think it's, it's good to put these in place. Um, when somebody, I mean, all this is public land.
Yeah.
Of the water, so no one can use it without permission anyway. So the moorings goes through the process and all of that. So, and, and that comes with an application, how big your boat, blah, 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 like Peter, all that stuff, right? Cause it's usually in well.
What it does, like for a ten A float, it's a little bit different because they're really just commenting for the float itself, right?
Float itself, not for the.
Well, so we're just trying to make sure they don't build something on top of that float.
Yeah, definitely. Well, the good thing for getting ahead of it, that's for sure. I was just confused about that.
Anyway, we're not trying to stop people from working. It was a, you know, a lobster that needed something or it was a partial condition, you know, something on those sites. A little bit.
So how does this impact our potential oyster farm?
Well, that's why I was saying if it was, if oyster farming became a ministry, um, then go back to rules and regulations and it could be lobster car or oyster.
But all you're saying is you can't live on. So you can still have these huts.
We don't, we're, we're looking to try to not have a lot of huts.
Right.
Structures, structures of any type on a ten A float are protected. So we're saying any structure that's built on top of ten A floats are protected, whether it's, uh, for dwelling or for, for, you know, with them, so.
Yeah, but it did come up at the meeting that it was, um, or someone came in about before and said, well, if it was oystering or something like that, and I said, well, that's something we'd have to kind of go back to.
I thought we were promising our rights that they wouldn't let there be shacks.
I think, I think, yeah, selfish right, so you can't have a structure.
Yeah, you can't have shacks.
Okay, so listen.
We said that in that area.
No, we said for our restaurant.
But it could be, we could change it if it was, if you could oyster somewhere else.
Well, that's another, cause it's another meaning.
Yeah. But this is prohibiting, this is prohibiting those structures period. So if a new lobsterman came to town and wanted one, he could do it.
Well, I think that's a point of clarification. You know, we're not staying, we're not, can, we're not doing ten A floats anymore. We're just stopping people from getting ten A float or building a structure on top of it.
Right, so a new lobster couldn't have a ten A float and they put a structure on it.
None of that, not today. They have a year, and they have a spot to store, uh, keeper, holder, holder lobster.
But it's in that one location in, uh, North River.
So it's only one?
It's only.
So the dockets, the, the ten A float itself is fine, yeah?
And if they want to put their lobster parts, you know, storage up on top, um, he's wanted it so that it was covered so that if there was weather, it'd blow off.
Right.
Yeah, we're not preventing that, preventing building on top of ten A floats.
We're trying to stop.
So in Duxbury, they do allow.
They have structures up, right? Yeah. And it's for. Counting houses, I think, and, you know, telling houses, it's processing.
But they don't live on it.
Or it doesn't matter, this is.
Yeah, this is, yeah, we're trying to really just stop it, you know. It doesn't mean that they can't come back and say, this is what we're looking to do and, you know, the water cycle might change, you know, regulations.
But you would be the guardian of that, you would be the one that said, no.
No, you gotta go to the water, you know.
And we might have to change that.
And, and I think it is one, I think you might already have, Jim's point, you might already have written into the shellfish rules or anything.
Yeah, I know we said we wouldn't, we wouldn't do those, but.
Andrew.
So, again, I don't know labor, but it does seem like it's a height, height issue and also whether it's a permanent structure or whether or not those are these commercial lobster, this is in permanent, it's not like they're buildings and they're just putting traps up there, right? So that's, so that's, yeah, that's fine, yeah. But it's permanent structure.
They usually have like, you know, uh, two feet above a waterline and lots of dust there.
Those are, those are higher.
Well, but they're, they're structured.
Real structured, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you, obviously the fishermen are talking at your meetings.
Yeah, we hit, um, we have, uh, Dave Haley is a lobsterman. He's at the meetings, uh, has some work on the board. Uh, he hasn't been coming to meetings recently, so I don't think it was here for any of these.
But there's no pushback?
No, no, I don't know why. It was just, you know, some saying that in the future, something changed, it's like sort of people are revisiting.
Well, I will say when we ever do zoning changes, no one ever hears about it. And then all of a sudden, we do the change and everyone's like, what? It happened, so everybody can take this as notice that, you know, we're considering these and.
Yeah.
That they should take.
I'm like, look.
You guys are taking.
You got one structure, that's fine.
Are you guys taking, do you have?
No. No.
So, make sure you get your minutes out so that people can see it and.
Yeah.
Maybe we can just put some flags somewhere on the town of, it's like, take a look at these, those real changes. Oh, I just, I think houseboats would be defined a little bit stronger, um, as I said, just looking at some of the other structures that are out there, yeah. Um, or insert float ten A in the first section, the first sentence, it's just.
Yeah.
It's, it's just not really clear.
Okay.
So is it saying that houseboat cannot be attached to a mooring? Does that have a permanent float dock or slip?
Yeah.
That's why I think they have to kind of define a little bit.
Yeah, I think it was originally set out to address ten A floats with structures being built on them. But as it kind of evolved with the work group, they looked at houseboats, because we've gotten feedback from other people that they've had houseboat issues in different areas, so.
But that's what, because now that you're.
First of all, you'll see them mooring more, because you looked on, like, you see them down that side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a whole houseboat community in Charleston, a lot of them, yeah. But that's the private arena.
Private.
Yeah, and they're tied up to Charleston.
They are, yeah.
That's, that's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what's the difference between a houseboat and a boat?
Boat. If you live in a, like a cabin or something, right, yeah, or. A yacht. Yeah. Up the wrong, that's super yacht.
I don't know much about this, but I think that's.
Are you coming out this summer?
It's not, the structure is not a ten A float itself.
Right.
Right, yeah.
They both, you know.
So I think to Paul's point, we just need to define that a little bit better and that we need to change the government so that it starts with, you know, structures of any type can be built on ten A floats, um. That, that's probably the idea, right? We have down the bottom, do that up and then define houseboats better.
Does a ten A float have a dimension, can it be, you know, could it be thirty feet wide or pretty?
That apparently helps with that issue of the, you know, size of the water, it looks.
But you already have the power to control the size of them.
Yeah, but we just wanted it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Written down so I could say, well, this is what.
Everything's better to be written down.
Yeah.
Andrew, do you have any other? Okay. Do you want to move on to the next section, the fees, the fee schedule?
Yeah. The fee schedule, we're just proposing, uh, idol equipment, you know, it needs to be defined, right? At two hundred and fifty dollars per day is a fine for, uh, a commercial vessel that's sitting without doing work for periods of time. We want, we want that, that vessel to be, let's say, in the harbor or the river for long periods of time without being actually physically doing work.
Are the only changes that, that are right here, um, or are the?
They are, the, the, uh, the, the terms liability minimum is actually in, um, it's listed under. Item B, under construction equipment, that it has to have liability insurance. But they said that the amount can be found in the water with these structures, so that would be that as well.
Okay, but the rest of the fees are the ones, are last years?
Yes, correct. Those are what is existing fees.
No increases.
Well, yeah, it's still increases, but that was already ruled last year.
Yeah.
Right, I'm just saying, but for the government, yeah.
Yeah, Mike, my other question here is, if you don't want someone to do something, is that enough of a fine?
You know, two fifty a day.
So does it take one hundred thousand dollars a week to, to store your boat somewhere?
There was some discussion about that, like, uh, because initially we, we were a hundred and then it was like two fifty. But if you have a big piece of equipment and you have no one to go with it, you know, that's the other question, is it?
I, I know, you know, whatever costs.
It should be something, you know, maybe you could be graduated like this, two fifty, you know, five days or for seven days, and it goes on five hundreds for next week, a thousand dollars a day, you know.
Maybe one. Is there something like that, like you said, for a big piece of equipment, maybe you have to twelve hundred dollars a week, do you?
Yeah.
Any other questions? No. So I think we're probably not gonna vote these tonight until we've got those definitions.
Yeah, clarify.
Yeah, and we'll get you that on the agenda ASAP.
Okay. I think we've done.
Anybody else in the audience have any questions? I was jumping up and down here. Okay, thank you. Next one, I appreciate, yes, appreciate, we all appreciate. It's hard work going through regulations and laws and rules and fee schedules.
But it's fine.
Yeah, it's good. And I would suggest, you know, you might want to have someone approve some of these because awful lot of things.
Really?
Yeah, that's, that's my thing, sorry. I'd be happy to do it, but.
Not one of our strengths, a lot of it.
No, you know what? You can't read your own stuff anymore, so always good to have someone else.
Thanks, dear.
Thank you very much. We're down to the arena sometime, take more pride.
Always. All right, discuss boat, North Situate Train Canopy Contract, how it's going?
How you doing, boy?
Good. This is, this train canopy thing is on and on and on and on and on, so let me explain to people where this is. It's in North Situate, it's, it's the old train stop, so it's behind, um, the building that the post office, all those little places are. Did the actual roof, the, the outer part of the roof, was that finally finished?
Yeah, that, that's why the budgets went down, um, for, I think, eight, five thousand, thirty-six thousand.
Because I know that took a long time to get together and to get it done, so this is underneath the roof.
Yep. See there, um, so, yeah, it has been a little bit of a long time coming, but in twenty nineteen, C B C, uh, money was incorporated at that meeting for this project. And I guess it's actually went up a bit, uh, a few times without any bidders. So I want to thank Suzie Hoffmeister from E D C, she really has been on the project, she ended up just staying on top of, uh, everybody to make sure that we, um. Put out an R F P, most past one seven went so well, and then also Nancy did a great job of tightening up the R F P this time, so that it was more fun to give the bet on.
Yeah.
So we did receive three this, um, and it was the only instruction that came in, um. The loss, the, the person that came to the loss actually, uh, was disqualified because they didn't have everything in it, so.
Anyone have any questions about what it is, does this finish the actual canopy structure?
Yeah.
All right, so everything else is to come at some point, right?
I wouldn't agree with that.
Well, there was talk of having, uh, chairs and picnic tables.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because I think, I think the thought of just fixing the structure and then having it just to be a structure.
Right, right, right.
Without it being used somehow and or, you know, like, have some use.
I think that's a great idea, and it'd be a great, great follow up, um, for additional C B C funding, which I think would be a lot of.
If, well, if, if the struc, if the things are not permanent, it wouldn't be, but there are always different ones to, to do things, so.
Yeah.
Does the board have any questions about this particular project, as I have been just nodding over to.
No, just none.
Yeah, um, we can take a vote, but I want you to stay because this brings up North Situate.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, let me be excited, so do I have a motion just to ignore this contract?
Sure, approve that as like board, a 10 A contract in the amount of fifty-six thousand one hundred dollars to the instruction for ring for the installation of cedar ceiling at the North Situate Train Canopy location.
Motion by Miss Karen, second, second, second by Miss Campfield, on favor, hi, hi, Sarah, motion Karen's. Um, Kyle, we all know we, we, North Situate needs help. Um, and to be honest with you, even if we get sewer there.
Yeah.
We're a long way from dealing with some of the issues up there, attracting these issues, um, just making it look better.
Yeah.
I've been trying to help, uh, get the Jamie's hub site at least fenced off and fenced up.
Yeah.
I said, oh, it doesn't have any green, no, but at least there's a fence, yeah, uh, because it, it's a safety issue, but it's also. It's, it's a beautification issue, it's a, it's an issue of, you know, when people come into town on the train and they get off in North Situate, I saw four people get off the train today and like, like they didn't know what they were calling. It, it's just, we, we need help up there. And I know that there's, um, when they get the, um, public hearings about what the zone would look like up there, so that once we do get a sewer solution up there, that. We're not going to have people just all of a sudden coming in and we don't have a proper zoning in place. But I guess I'm asking you and the planning department to please take a look at what can we do up there?
Yeah.
Um, how can we help make it look better? It's just, it, it's, because even if we get sewer, we're, we're talking, you get the sewer in, you got to have the construction done, and then. Everything up there will get sold, if it has an R N, it's sold, and then it would be five years of construction. So I, I'm just asking that, you know, North Situate be given some attention and maybe, uh, if you could bring someone around, uh, get that group, Anne Burbine. Get that group together, the, the North Situate, the friends or, you know, whoever might be interested in, and just try to explain to people, so for example. You know, I, I thought, I guess I knew in the back of my mind that we weren't going to be allowed to go on a Jamie's site and take the junk that's in there, out of there. But I think people need to understand that the town can only go so far in, in basically private property. We already have an opportunity, for example, with the train canopy, what can we do there? How can we bring people, I'm not to the, I don't know.
Yeah.
Excuse me, yes, yes, um, Anne Burbine, Anne Burbine, ten minutes, right.
Thank you, I got to.
Merch in North Situate?
Yes.
It is my understanding, and I could even correct you, but the North Situate Village Room, if you will. Had talked about bringing in picnic tables and what have you, so there's also electricity. Whether that's been connected or not, I have no idea.
I know we, there was a lot of work done on that issue.
Yes, it was, and then all of a sudden it changed to a, a primary halt. So it's, um, you know, there are some issues up there, very definitely, parking, as I said at the candidates' forum, I don't concern myself with parking. Because people want you to show up, but we end up with people that are parking in two hour parking spaces, there is no enforcement. The other issue that we have that you can think about right now for next winter, when you plow up in North Situate, please plow the sidewalks. Don't pile up the snow on top of sidewalks, you have to walk into the street. So, I mean, these are different things that we can do. Beautification has come along around to everyone, every merchant in North Situate with a, a voucher to go and get flowers, which we will do. But there are banners up there right now, um, there's going to be a, a program Saturday from, I think it's two to six. At the Wood One Four Three, the tackle truck, we're trying, they're trying in North Situate to do stuff. And I would like us to see what we can do, if someone can put that sort of list together. And send it to Kyle so that he can then coordinate with D P W or whoever else to, you know, sometimes small group is help. And sometimes it's a simple explanation that we can't touch a private property. You might think, well, it, it's also, excuse me, my understanding, talking to, we had D P W this evening, they're really working the next few weeks. On the water room up in North Situate, so that the, um, hydrant, which has been dormant for however many years, will finally be functional, which will be a plus.
Yes. Right.
So, you know, things are, are moving apace.
Yeah. Well, I'm just frustrated by, um, Jamie's pub site, and I know I'm not alone, I know ninety-nine, we're ninety percent of people frustrated by it, I just wish we all were Karen and.
Well, we all should just run their squash, believe me.
I, I think he's behind on his taxes.
Yeah.
So at some point, in a not too distant future, he doesn't, you know, come on, we're gonna be able to crack it.
Yeah.
It'd be nice just to be able to put a little park there, you know?
I think Karen brings up a good point, you know, because out of planning and development, it would be nice if we could keep an eye on that area and figure out. How do we maintain it and keep it at least aesthetically a little bit more pleasing to the eye while we continue to wait for a sewer solution?
Cohasset has voted, or we sent them our paperwork and said, you need to sign this up and told you, voted, I signed it. I haven't seen it yet, but I'm totally voting, so I emailed that.
Both committees? Both committees?
Situate Cohasset has.
But both committees, in, in, meaning both the sewer commission and the select board?
Yes. Yes, the sewer commission and the select board.
Oh, good.
So I emailed the, the managers, the guys, said, all right, let's go to regional store, let's go.
Yeah.
I, I know, um, Wilder has plans for his property, he's ready to go.
Yeah, is he the Don Brook that can't mention that just?
No, no, that's, that's a different part.
No. Right, right, at least they've planned it, the, the, oh, I know who he is, but who wants, did you say Budbrook was also sold? Yeah, and Aaron Power bought it. He's the one that I was asking.
So I know there are, there are plans, people have plans, it's just they get so, unless we tell them storage is coming and it's definitive.
Yeah. Yeah.
They'll be in the planning board to, to get that stuff approved and try to dovetail it when the storage goes in, so.
Well, I know we've done a lot of preemptive work, um, you know, I've walked with you in the past, that group that came through E D C with, you know, potential. Visionary plans of what the area could look like, so all that work that we paid for and done for the past ten years, I mean, let's pull it out and make sure that. We're all.
Yeah.
On the same page here moving forward.
Yeah.
And that we're not unaware of some of the issues up there with, especially that particular site.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that you say that we should implement strong design, um, standards for any new development, um.
Yeah, it's obvious there, I, I think this predates to, there was a couple of meetings at the library, and there were a lot of people at those meetings, where.
Yeah, so what I meant actually was enforce, enforce damage design, um, standards for new development, hold strong reconstruction meetings so it doesn't get chaotic, but it's incredible and full of development.
Yeah, yes. Well, I guess I'd also like to, to ask you to use an eye toward, what do we have here now that we can potentially fix? Make it look, look a little better, make it a little more welcoming, you know?
Absolutely.
That kind of thing.
So it's almost as good as if there's any sort of a honey pot, uh, for, uh, like, it sounds silly, but Cambridge has fifty public, three bike repair places. How many cyclists go over down Gann Street? How many people might just stop, have a place to stop? Fix their bike, pump their tire, maybe go into Water Forty-Three, get those truffle things, those truffles. Not center, but who knows, but it's something that it's, but it's not parking, it's something small, like a seven hour bus.
Get a pillow for the butt.
Get a pillow. Drop tail.
But that, but that was the goal Susan Thibodeau had for the visitor center.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's never quite full.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, you could have kayak rentals up there, you could have a jitney to the beach, but nobody wants people from away to the beach. So it's, it's tough, yeah, I mean, we now have a sidewalk to the beach. Yeah, it's not a bad thought. A jitney. A jitney.
A jitney, you think of New York City.
Jitneys are in your future.
We call them boss.
Hey, call them, you know.
A jitney's a nicer term.
That's true, for boss.
So, all right, that's all I have to say, I don't know if anyone else.
I look forward to leaving that for the, for the area, new design.
Yeah, well, gotta get that sewer. I want to do that, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Do you want to stay while we call in?
Or, you know, if you really put the sewer in, I'll kill the sewer project.
Sure.
Why am I supposed to be here?
Wilder's, he said he has a place to do his disposal, but he's not going to pay for it.
If he thinks.
The sewer shop, he has a great well, boss.
Well, isn't that the same thing with the guy who owns that, boy, is that, that, that harm building?
There's a ton of space back there, but.
That's his septic system.
Yeah.
And it's, there are those that feel that something was, enters into the right way of the train.
Yeah.
So I think the back of that building is a disaster.
It is, and it's, there's a lot of rain back there.
So now. Yes, there is, and he owns that entire block, including.
Yeah.
What? With easement. Hold on, let me put your speaker, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Hello, this is Sue, this is a perfect segue from Situate Visitor Center to Sue to Pizza, and the next, Jen, I don't know.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Hi. Yes, sorry to interrupt your situation, you're all sympathetic, um. So we have a presentation update, the viewpoint video demo and, um, Situate Visitor Center update, um. Who would like to talk about the viewpoint video, I don't think a lot of people know about it, there are a few of us, but Michelle was instrumental in coordinating a lot of the. Getting this into town, and I know Jen worked on this, and if you can explain what it is. Sue, do you want to start or do you want me to go through my points?
Sure, um, I was thinking I would give a little E D C update.
Okay.
And then go right into the visitor center, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
Um, thank you for receiving me this way, time, aside of the time. Um, first, uh, thanks for drawing more attention to North Situate, everybody, uh, that area is definitely, um. Looking a little forlorn still, even though there's a lot of businesses in there, but I should. Be friends with North Situate and the Business Association, we would welcome, um, more support for sure. Um, so there's lots of exciting things happening at E D C, and we're, we're trying to be as proactive as possible to promote economic development. Um, as the commission has evolved, it has evolved, uh, we've seen that we can have a positive impact on the business community. We're also learning that not all requests for funding that come before us, while they may be approved by us, they don't always get, um, through the process, they don't meet the criteria, so. So we've had, you know, a couple of requests approved in the past, but learned after the fact, they didn't fit into that, um, criteria, which was a little disappointing, but. I'd like to go into twenty twenty-three with a clear vision of what can and cannot be funded by E D C. And we're working with Kyle on that and our, um, board liaises on Karen, Campfield, to identify the areas where we can help the most. Um, so E D C continues to take a lead on the effort to bring local business groups together, to enjoy the benefits that come with working together as a group. Uh, we hosted a business roundtable in the fall as a starting point for future efforts. It's taken time, uh, a lot of time, but we also have established strong liaisons with, uh, North Situate Business Association, the Harbor Business Association. Uh, Green Bush, a business rep from Green Bush, they don't give up an association, uh, Situate Agricultural District, Sister City Advisory, Chamber, Historical Widow. Uh, Friends of North Situate, Waterway, and, and most of these people actually attend our meetings every month, so it's great, we're, we're really. Trying to work together and, um, try to figure out what the concerns are, um, figure out how we can help. Um, again, we've been working with Kyle and Michelle Gessi to update the C Situate. Page, um, as well as the E D C page on the website. And in twenty twenty-three, we'd like to take the E D C page a little bit further by communicating the message that Situate is a good place to do business. Um, you know, maybe streamline, streamline instructions on the website and give afterward guidance to potential businesses. Um, we also want to update the local business database, I think it's fairly, um, dated. Uh, so that we can have current information on each business in town. Because we've learned, uh, through COVID, that there are a number of businesses in Situate who are non-brick and mortar, and we'd like to begin to engage them as well, so our business community can be. Um, enlarged and decorated and bring new ideas and new participation, so there's a lot, a lot of damages to engaging them, so. Um, so there've been several initiatives that we hope to tackle in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, the major project at E D C has been the Situate Visitor Center and will continue to be. Um, we introduced it last year to the select board and, I would probably say that launched in twenty twenty-one and was supported by the town through E D C's budget as well as some private advertising and sponsors. Um, well, initiated by E D C, it is an established five oh one per seat, a nonprofit. Uh, the visitor center board took the lead from other established visitor centers in the state, um, as, as you all know, uh, to incorporate as a nonprofit versus being another town committee. Um, there are a number of reasons, but mainly it's about private fundraising, grant opportunities, and independent board working in collaboration with the town. So the mission of the center, of the visitor center is to promote Situate as a travel destination and boost the local economy. So Situate Visitor Center should be viewed, in our opinion, as the tourism arm of the town. Like, like other visitor centers, this one works closely with the town and local government to ensure that we manage the invitation to visit Situate, ensuring the least impact on residents. Again, using other towns' examples, we understand that this effort has the potential to add income to our town task base. Um, along with our businesses, without increasing tax pressure on the current residents. So, this year, uh, I worked with Jim, uh, Drew, in securing a company to produce a professional documentary of the town. Featuring the natural beauty of Situate as well as the historic and cultural highlights. We had some superstars from the, um, select board on there, I believe, um, so we were, we were. Um, so we were, we were very lucky. We had a beautiful day for filming, um, and interviews in September. And now Michelle and I have been working together preparing for the release of the video, which we believe is just a couple of weeks away. We're also working on separate targeted demographic email to be sent to about a million potential visitors through, uh, through the video production company, part of the package that we paid for. So, um, the video will be available on the town website via YouTube. We're working on that now, so it doesn't eat up all the space on the site as well as on the Situate Visitor Society. And we're trying to figure out where else we're going to, uh, put it. Maybe the Chamber would be invited to, to, uh, also host it. So it, um, it will be run, um, as a, uh, in, in, on the, on public television in several cities and reaching several million people. Um, it promises to be the centerpiece of a soft marketing campaign to attract visitors. It's with the timing with perfect establishment of the visitor center. Um, and the video, um, it, it will ensure that the, the visitor center flourishes into a model for economic development, and that, that's what we're focused on. So, um, this is basically a entrepreneurial venture. It's just a lot of work that's been done by a small group of dedicated people. Um, and, and we do think of Susan Sippen often about how she tried to get this going, the timing was just not right. Um, and anyway, it's mostly a volunteer basis. Uh, we're proud to say that the website launched in July and is running well. At these virtual sites, take time and patience to see the rewards of the work. Um, but, but we're getting there. The committee has worked tirelessly to make sure that the kinks are out, local events are up, always updated and prepared for the arrival of the video, which should be a big boost. Um, we're building a strong social media presence and now taking on fundraising to sustain the anticipated growth. Fundraising plans, um, are, are being planned right now. Um, they're sort of multifaceted, include advertising, revenue, sponsorships, memberships, local municipal funds and grants. And then the, the, the thing about the grants is that the organization has to be two years old, so that'll be February 2023. So that's what we're working up towards. Um, so we feel, EDC, everyone at EDC and the, um, visitor center feel that, um, the visitor center is an important tool to promote Situate as a travel destination. So we've got some great data analytics, uh, to confirm our target market, which is what we'll use for the, um, for the million emails of how we're, we're going to determine what the demographic is. We're also fortunate enough to be aligned with Steve Clements, which I think I've mentioned to you before, um, is the driver of tourism in Clement County. So Steve Clements is very active in the state, advocating for funding to support tourism for the region. And I'm sure you've heard that they, um, got a grant, um, in collaboration with the Irish Heritage Trail, which is great. So they, they also provide excellent demographic information to us, which is what, what we need to make sure we're targeting the right market. Um, we're building a relationship with the Social Chamber, which of course is a powerhouse in the region. Um, they're very supportive of the town, particularly the visitor center, um, which is great. They are the, um, a great resource for the visitor center, and like Steve Clements, they're always advocating for positive economic development. Um, the visitor center is also a member of the Situate Chamber of Commerce, and we're hoping to build a strong working relationship and collaborate with them on some future initiatives. So we have, uh, we have a lot of, like, EDC and Situate Visitor Center, um, and we will probably add more. In fact, that's how I think it works, um, on an annual basis. Uh, the one thing I would like to mention, and I'm only gonna say this, we have not done anything about this. I hope it's not front page news. Um, EDC would like, um, to revisit the idea of reinstalling the billboard of 3A at the entrance to North Situate. We have not made any concrete plans. We have not taken any action on it. We're just starting to talk about it. Um, it ties in nicely with the promotion of the town. It was there for years. And once North Situate is revitalized, then it may be time to provide a proper entrance to Situate from, from the north at least. Um, so I know Michelle is going to, um, share some more information and show the video to everybody. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you want about EDC or, uh, visitor center.
Oh, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You must have a cast of thousands working for you, right, Sue? Um, could I just add one thing?
Yeah.
Um, I've been on this for like years. I don't know why there is not a Situate sign on Route 3A, I mean, Route 3. Coming from the Cape or coming down to Boston? When I was on EDY, one of the social coalition, said every single year. I get it.
I don't get it either. I have asked-
Man Tasket is on, is on the sign. There is no Norwell, if you're coming from the north, is, I think there are three signs, is it Norwell?
Right.
There's not one that says Situate. I don't know why. So we can have, I, I mean, don't get me wrong. I understand people have ways and they involve all this other stuff. But I just think to have the word Situate on one of those signs up, X13 or whatever, whatever exit number it is now. Both coming from the Cape, where a nice stop off from, you know, if you're coming from the Cape up to Boston and vice versa. So I'm, I, maybe I'm just talking into the winds, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Right.
And just on the-
Twenty-five years.
Tried for 25 years.
All right, well, I guess we've tried for 25 more. So, but Sue, I didn't think we'd get off on that, but when you talk about visitors and it's, it would be nice the word Situate was somewhere on Route 3.
Yeah, I, I agree. You're thinking a lot bigger than me. Um, I, I, I do think, uh, because the billboard was there at one point. I mean, we, we, we really haven't done any work on this. I just wanted to mention it. Um, and it, it sort of ties into all the things I just talked about, and they do brought up with North Situate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is gonna be a little challenging. I did reach out to a contact, uh, through DPW with the state about doing a new billboard, and they did not seem to be very receptive. Oh, it's on the state highway, yeah, Henry Turner Valley, yeah, 3A. So we may need some, uh-
Just some higher-
Beautification, renovation or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, in any event, Sue, I think covered everything beautifully. I just wanted to, um-
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, between, um, town representatives, Jim, I was very involved. Um, our community superstars for the video, Jeremy Norton and Patrice May. Um, there were a lot of people involved with this, and I think Sue really, um, explained how well the town, EDC, and Situate Visitor Center all ties in together. I think from the get-go with, um, you know, when Jim brought this to EDC, um, you know, it was designed to gear people through the visitor center, and as you'll see in the video, um, everything's gonna be driven to them. It's a beautiful site. I'm very impressed with it. Um, so a little bit more background on this, uh, viewpoint. A lot of people might not really understand what that is. It's called Viewpoint with Dennis Quaid. It's actually a public educational series. The topic for our piece was discovering America, great places to live, work, and visit, which is perfect. Um, and what we got, this is what I really want to make sure everybody understands, what we got for, um, you know, the pain for our buck. We have a segment that we're gonna air now that's a three to four minute demo piece that's exclusive rights to us. Um, we can provide this link to all of our groups, Chamber, social commerce, um, merchants, associations, and so forth. Um, in addition to that, we have a 30-second commercial. And that's why we're here today, because we're finally at the point where they're gonna air that commercial. So we've got a national commercial. Um, it's tentatively scheduled for May 26th. I'll keep you posted. And that's going to air on Fox Business Network. And then the regional commercial airings, they don't tell you, um, specifically, but we know it's gonna be in the top 100 markets in the evening, 6:00 to 11:45 time slots. And it's gonna be on such networks as CNN, MSNBC, CNBC, Discovery Life, and CNN Headline News. And that's for the whole month of May. After the fact, I think we'll get another report of exactly where, when, to how many times, and so forth. And then the last piece of this, um, production is, as Sue mentioned, the email campaign. So that's, we still have to work on that. We have, um, demographics that we can choose from, and we have to just develop a one-page, beautiful HTML, email, and they'll push that out. So we're ready.
And no, folks, we did not need Dennis Quaid.
We did.
I think one wants to know. But it was, Michelle did a great job, uh, and we really appreciate the work you've done on this. And I think people will be, people will be very impressed. It's a very professional organization that did the production, and they were great people to work with, and, uh, so, and it's amazing what they were able to do just with pretty much just the day of town.
Right.
So.
Uh, other than that, Sue, I know we talked about the communication plan.
The-
Um, the, uh, local promotion banners, window claims, did you want to talk about that?
Oh, yeah. So, um, we plan to ramp up the social media on this for ourselves. And, um, also, we just are starting to disperse, um, window claims. Um, they'll have a QR code on it, and then they'll go, um, they'll go to our website at the visitor center, but it's, then we're going to link the website. That's what I'm trying to say. So, um, we're doing that. We're trying to get some press on it. Yeah, as you know, the local press is a little bit, um, discomparated at the moment. Um, so we're, um, we're working on that, and we, hopefully we're gonna do a press release. I think, uh, Michelle and I and a member of the visitor center committee is going to, they're gonna meet next week and make a plan.
I'd also like to suggest the, um, the state has, we all know, I think, a film bureau. And this particular, both versions of this, they could probably put it right on their site so that people who are looking for locations could just pick it up and see it. And I think the state also, whenever, whenever they do a tourism campaign, like the Spirit of Massachusetts or whatever, um, and I'm sure they must be gearing up to do something because people seem to be wanting to stay closer to home rather than venturing too far afield. So if, if, if somehow whether this could be, they could put a link on their site so that people would be able to come up with that.
I think the only Michelle didn't mention is we also have all the raw, um, product.
Yes.
So we want to take that, do something with it. In the future, we have all the raw footage that we own, that we're gonna take. So 12-year-old knows this, but I do think, something else, we got a lot footage, so that's another policy. We have a lot of footage.
That is incredibly valuable, you have.
Especially the drone footage.
And, and well, and, and just the professional photographer, that aspect of it. So not that we don't love our images, but, so. Any questions for the board before we have the, the screening?
World Command.
Yeah, for a website. And then if you guys haven't had a chance to, to just play with the website, it's really, really pretty.
Does there sound?
Does there sound?
Yeah, beautiful.
Yeah, definitely take a look at that. Any suggestions, we are open to it. We, we really, we, we press people on it every single day trying to make sure that it's updated all the time and it's not, um, it's not something that we're not paying attention to 24/7.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll cue Seth.
Just the natural beauty of Situate inspires people to come down. You can't duplicate that anywhere. You have to actually come and see the way the sun looks when it's coming up, or the mist over the water, or the boats going in and out. It's just mesmerizing. When you come and you see it, people stay, uh, because they love it so much.
We're lucky in the fact that our geography has left us small. It's a very special place. You can come here and enjoy our beaches and get the small-town feel, you know, stroll around the harbor. You don't have to get on a ferry. You don't have to get on a plane. It's an easy place to get to. It's a place where people work. It's a place where I want to live. It's a place where people play. It has a great school system. It calls to me. And I think that that is something that you'll hear echoed from a lot of people as you walk around town.
If you come and live and work in Situate, you don't ever have to leave because everything you need is gonna be right here.
We are one of the few communities in Massachusetts that are designated a cultural district. The street is just completely full of visual artists and musicians. People can serendipitously interact with art as they walk down, grab a bite at a restaurant. It's really quite magical.
Fishing industry goes back hundreds of years here on Situate. It's one of the last commercial fishing towns in Massachusetts. It's a great place to work and live and enjoy, uh, the harbor.
We have all kinds of very enterprising people who live here and who like the fact that it's a small town and has a small-town atmosphere. It's the kind of a place where you can get involved. We're the most Irish community outside of Ireland, and so we, of course, had to have a sister city partnership with Ireland. We, uh, discovered Cork.
People are really proud of their Irish heritage.
Situate is also a diverse community with a large Cape Verdean population. It's a welcoming, small community with a shared love of the sea.
And when people get here, it's sort of like going on vacation, but it's really only an extra 20 minutes away.
We're located on the ocean halfway between Boston and the Cape. We have a varied housing stock. We have great public schools. We have lovely shopping. We have fabulous restaurants. Situate has everything you can want.
And it's, it's a real journal, I think, just because we're streaming.
It's just a video.
Over there, yeah, yeah, but.
So wait, that's gonna play, or is there a commercial that is, sorry?
There's a smaller version of the commercial.
Okay.
That's, takes just 30 seconds for this, so.
That would be a documentary.
No, this is for ours.
And then commercials.
Where's the Dennis Quaid part of this?
Understanding. So we're, we are providing content for their public TV. So our series could end up at some point, um, in Dennis Quaid's, you know, series, but we just don't know yet.
And he would come visit here?
No, no, he has, he, uh, if you check it out.
Maybe what if we showed him the film and invited him down?
I still feel it was like a teaser that, you know, he would then do like an expose on Situate or something.
No, he's, he's designed to be kind of non-biased, to not sell anything. He would just promote the great place to live, and then it would kind of go into Situate.
Gotcha.
So he doesn't have to direct Situate.
I honestly, I do think having all that footage is really, really the most valuable thing. And we didn't know Michelle was such a superstar.
Modern world can frame it that way.
He rapped poetic from the very get-go, and I was like, oh, good for you.
He did one take out.
Yeah.
Oh, they were very nice.
They were.
So very passionate.
Hate the song, hate the song, my own voice on. Make the sound of my own voice on.
Nobody likes, nobody likes the way they look. Everybody likes, it's like, oh. So, any questions or, but thank you to Sue and thank you to Michelle and Jim and everybody who worked on this.
At the Harbor Cultural District, I also have to point out because we rarely worked, um, to pull together this entire art launch to coincide with when the filmmaker was coming, which gave us so much, um, content.
Yeah, it was great to see the artisan outside.
Yeah.
And your question.
Yeah, sorry.
Are we going to be advising our, um, local restaurants that this is running? Um, because if prompts.
Yeah.
Well, we're. Okay.
That was going to, I was going to dovetail on that. The, the communication plan that is outlined in the background, that's, that's good. I don't expect that Town Hall's phone is going to be ringing exactly to your point is we should, I, I know the chamber has been aware of this, but we need to remember just saying, it's coming, it's coming. You know, I can't.
Yeah, you know, our plan is to, uh, reach out to the, to the larger community, the business community and really, um, make them understand, uh, what's happening. And, uh, you know, as you said, Marcy, make sure they're ready for it.
And to encourage them to link, you know, on their websites to.
Sure.
To the video as well. I mean, certainly, many of them are featured. It's all society.
And then I have one question. So. So, to me, what is missing in media is phase two, right? And maybe it's because we don't have that good of parking, but are all trails that we've developed? Are the kayak and mapping trails, the trips that have already been mapped out, sit somewhere out there on the conservation page? Like, how are we bringing that piece of our community together? Because while Harbor is our gem, right, there are other things that people like to do, which is to hike and kayak and things.
Well, and honestly, we also really miss the historical aspect of the town. But, you know, that's why I'm saying, I think this, especially this extra footage can be, you know, really instrumental, um, experience in creating, yeah, creating something that's.
And, and also, that, that reason, um, we want to bring on, you know, all these other, um, other organizations into either EDC or the Visitor Center so that we're covering all of the activities. Um, on the Visitor Center, we're not promoting the beaches so much because there is a lack of parking. Um, you know, and it's, you know, the high tide is high tide. We know what that situation is. So we're trying to promote the cultural and historic, um, features of the town. And then that will naturally lead to, uh, you know, dining and shopping. So that's how we're going. But that's why we really need the demographic. Um, and that's what we're working on now.
One of, one of the nice features I'll point out on the Visitor Center's website is they have this, if you go onto the bars, there's itaries. And so to your point, Mar, if you go to Situate for hikers, you use an itinerary that says, oh, and then you can walk over here on the west end. So I, I think they, I think you're right. It's, it's, it's evolving. But this group has been working really hard to pull all those different threads in to this portal. It's not easy. It's one stuffed shop there. And it's.
Yeah, again, fabulous job all around. Now, it's for the email list. I don't know what demographics you're pulling, but maybe selfishly for the town, thinking about the, uh, Windows Block and golfers, I don't think it's super data, I think it's called the golfers. Maybe you also want to learn a little bit more, but you know, certainly.
History.
The history of, well, it was in the, yeah, I went through Windows Block, so.
Well, one of the things that's interesting there, Andrew, is that, um, and according to the developer of the site itself, we just got some analytics, but every single time, the area that, that visitors to the site hit the most are, they're interested in historical place. So, so we're working with, uh, with them to make sure that people can actually tour and they can call and reserve spots. And, uh, so that's an important piece. And we're also trying to get the gap traffic so that people could take the trains down and, you know, what is that route and how can they get from here to there? So a lot of moving pieces, but it's coming together.
Well, we know how hard it is, but we thank you very much. That's great. Thank you for coming in to report to us tonight. Congratulations on all the hard work. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Good night, Sue. Thanks a lot.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. Great job, Michelle. Thank you. Discuss vote, one-day wine and lawn licenses. Napster event at Situate Maritime Center on June 4th, 11 to 3 p.m. at the celebration party. And simply good catering at Situate Maritime Center on July 11th from 6 to 10 p.m. for a birthday party. Any questions?
Move.
Move by Mr. Vignani.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cantfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Um, discuss vote, renewal of Hoppercutter license known as ice cream.
Who the sledboard, uh, proved to renew the Hoppercutter license for Minnesota May 8th for the 2022 season.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. And I think their slogan, eat your dessert first on their trucks. Okay.
Yes.
That's a move. Yes. All right. Next item is liaison reports. Any liaisons?
Yes, Ms. Cantfield. Very quickly, um, I wanted to just commend the chamber for the, um, for the candidates forum that was held last week. It was, it was well-tended and very well-run. Uh, so that was last week. And, um, I wanted to let the board know that charter review has been resurrected and town meetings passed. Um, there will be one more meeting that will incorporate a discussion of the town council's comments on June 15th. And then one public forum to present the final document to the public. Um, as Seth, Seth doesn't know this yet, but to make a video or just keep the Zoom so that it can be distributed immediately prior to the special town meeting. But that is anticipated to be presented on map warrant. Um, and the last is I know that each commission is scheduling to come in soon. I haven't, I haven't been, if they talked with the chair about this. Uh, but one of the things they would propose is to organize with the beach association's monthly community cleanup of beaches throughout the summer. Um, and I just thought I could give a, because it's almost summer and, uh, I know they're putting in some point for all the lists of things they want to, uh, propose to the board. Beaches of one, Mr. Cantfield.
Well, I just got, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Trish Akar for, um, managing the event that we had last, two weeks ago, one, last weekend? It never was, with the French government, some, you should know, re, uh, celebrating our 10-year anniversary. So the event went great and I know that all the host families did a great job of keeping them busy and interactive for them visiting, so. Thank you very much that we're all there.
Um, I'd like to just say, this is not a liaison report, but I think there's a little confusion out there about elections. Uh, there is no such thing as early voting for our town election, uh, but absentee ballots are mailed in now in the town clerk's office. You can go in during regular business hours and you can either take it with you or you can vote there and, or you want to mail it in. But, um, they are, it's absentee voting, which is, I know it confuses people versus early voting, but, um, so the election is on May 1st. And Andrew and I are meeting tomorrow with Mr. Barkwitz.
Yes.
I've decided I'm just calling the Pier 44 committee.
Right, that's fine. It's easier.
Um, and so, um, we're going to discuss how we're going to move forward, so.
Yes, we'll be waiting.
Mrs. Curran.
I'm good.
You're good. You are good. Nothing's bad. Mr. Pritchard.
Uh, the only thing to add, uh, the commission of disabilities, that, that's met and also has great, uh, progress on, maybe the parking to ensure compliance, parking, how it's ever run, so, uh, thank you for getting that chair and your support and help with everything. But they have, I mean, the conclusion that it will be, uh, also potentially done, making beach.
Full sacred grounds.
It is the duck. Yes, it's all, it's all painted in compliance with the changes that they suggested.
Signed, sealed, and delivered.
Hold up.
Only time to hear, anyway. Anything else, Andrew?
Seth.
All right. Some correspondence, Andrew?
Sure, our national grid will be doing, uh, some pesticide and pesticide, uh, German there, yacht, yearly operational procedure, I actually said that. In full compliance of the Massachusetts Pesticide Bureau, we do. Um, but there's, they have a whole section of places they'll be going, but so folks at home know, it's in full compliance with state regulations to ensure that no, uh, pesticides, pesticides are in any sensitive areas, waterways. So it's sure, uh, in eyeballs, I don't know where they'll be going. Usually the treatment period is around the end of this month, end of May, excuse me, through October. Uh, and we'll discuss it again, South Shore Irish Trail reception. Um, we'll be having the, that, the lunch tickets, uh, the tickets at the Murphy Tavern, ssirishtrail.org. Uh, to get those, we'll discuss that. And lastly, I did most of us, uh, we also had a learn from, uh, Valerie, uh, residents, uh, who was, uh, concerned about beautifications and issues around, especially down, uh, Beaver Dam and some other areas that I, I think, um, we'll just want to let, heard of, that will certainly be a, uh, concerned with.
Michelle?
Yep.
No, oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
These are late additions.
We're late additions.
Yes. Breaking news.
Breaking news. Uh, on behalf of this U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, which we're going to attend the National Safe Voting Week kickoff in Massachusetts. Uh, it will be at the Coast Guard Station, which will be there for a long time, uh, on May 21st, beginning, beginning at 10 a.m. And it'll be a presentation and greeting of the state regulation for National Safe Voting Week.
People are welcome to attend. Yeah. So you got, all details.
I will read all details. Um, okay. Uh, Chief John Murphy, uh, regrets to announce, I will lie to you that, as we discussed, there was a firefighter John Reed, firefighter Reed, who was appointed as the fire department on July 18th, 1994, and was a member for 28 years before losing his courageous battle to cancer. His last assignment was that station for. John's work ethic, commitment, and determination to do his job well, and his friendship will be missed. Rest in peace, John. Uh, the, uh, the week details will be Monday, today, May 11th, 4 to 8 at St. Anthony's Church. 4 to 8 at St. Anthony's Church, 2 Summer Street, in Cohasset. The uniform walker at 3:30 p.m. Attending firefighters are asked to report at 3 p.m. Station coverage for all armed personnel will be from 1400 to 1800 hours Wednesday and 8:30 to 1500 hours Thursday. The funeral details, Thursday, May 12th, at Mass, will be at 11 a.m., again at St. Anthony's Church. Again, it's on 2 Summer Street in Cohasset. So Thursday, May 12th at 11 a.m. And attending firefighters are asked to report at 10. And please keep the reading family, your thoughts, prayers, and that is from, that's you, John.
So, again, condolences to the reading family. Um, approval of meeting minutes, please?
Would you accept the minutes? There's select board meeting held on April 26th, 2023.
Okay. Second by Ms. Cantfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Uh, you want to hear motion to adjourn and slide out of the seats?
So move.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Everybody?